Good evening and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Brocksville Planning Board for October. Thank you all for coming. Hopefully, we'll get through everything in short order. First of all, though, I would like to welcome the new members of our board, Ashley Hanrahan and Leslie Meyer, who have joined us, and we appreciate their presence and the fact that they volunteered their time and efforts for the betterment of the entire community. So, thank you, ladies, for joining us.
Thanks for having me.
Other than that, I'd like to say this is the first time we've all met in person in, I want to say, almost two years, right? A year and a half, at least?
Eighteen months.
Eighteen months, Jim's telling me. All right. So, first order of business is to approve the minutes from the September meeting. I was not in attendance, so would someone like to bring up those, any considerations or thoughts or changes you'd like to implement?
Has everyone had a chance to...
Did everyone?
...look at the minutes?
Yep.
Anyone have any comments or questions? Should we entertain a motion to approve them?
Vote to approve.
Second?
Do we have a second? Second by Leslie. All is in favor?
Aye.
Great. So, the minutes for September 8th have passed and enter into the record. Thank you. The first order of business tonight is 85 Pondfield Road. It's the Apple Bank Site Approval Plan. Is someone from the applicant here to speak? Would you do us the kindness of stepping up to the microphone? Tell us your name and give us your spiel.
Hi, my name is Toby Arianna. I'm an architect for Apple Bank and also representing Cyview LLC, which is the owner. This is a bank branch renovation on the ground floor of 85 Pondfield Road. The bank is seeking to make the ground floor portion of the branch smaller and subdivide the space to have a secondary approximately 900-square-foot retail space along the front facade. The only exterior changes are replacement of the storefront and kind. Canopies will remain as they are. At this time, we don't know who the retail tenant is, but of course, they'll be subject to whatever zoning requirements in terms of what type of space is allowed in the retail space.
Now, this is a sublet, correct?
This would be a sublet, yeah. The bank purchased, Cyview LLC purchased the branch in August of 2020. The branch itself has been here for quite a number of years, serving the community. All the exterior storefront is being replaced with, you know, high-efficiency, energy-compliant, New York State Energy-compliant storefront, and the branch interior is being refitted to their new standard. There's a significant reduction in tellers, which in turn significantly reduces the required parking and probably is a wash as far as the retail space goes. It's a fairly small retail space, 800, 900 square feet. So, we're just seeking to get approval to subdivide, to retail, mercantile use, and business use.
So, if I'm facing the bank, the new space is going to be to the left? Okay.
The left, yeah, of the three bays, the leftmost.
The left one.
Yeah.
And it's going to have a separate entrance and...
It's own, yeah, separate front entrance, which is currently the bank's ATM entrance, but we're doing structural work to reconfigure to allow for that to happen.
Now, you're telling, you're saying the building was sold or just the bank?
No, the building. The building was sold to Cyview LLC in August, yeah.
And would this be the only floor on which construction would be taking place? There are floors above.
There, there's a renovation. The, the branch has two levels. The vault is downstairs and coupon booths, and that's being refurbished in terms of finish.
So, one floor below would be renovated?
Would all be renovated, yeah.
And do we have the plans for downstairs or just...
Yeah, it's all here, yeah. This is a phasing plan, but, you know, will probably change as construction evolves, but it doesn't, you know, the downstairs configuration essentially remains the same. It's more of a finish and number of coupon booths that change.
So, this LLC that owns the building, that, that's not an, a part of Apple, that, of the bank?
Neil, do you know the answer to that?
That is an affiliate of the bank.
It's an affiliate of the bank.
It's an affiliate. So, as you said, this new space, all the construction you're doing is for the building or is for the bank underneath the bank's lease?
It's the, it's the bank, the bank branch's lease.
Excuse me, if you, if you're going to speak, could you come to the mic and announce and just tell us who you are?
I'm Neil Appleman. I'm a representative of Apple Bank, the corporate real estate.
Okay. Thank you.
So, this branch is a branch that was previously an immigrant branch until 2013, when Apple Bank took over immigrants' footprint in, in New York.
Right.
So, Apple has, had rebranded and taken over the space in 2013. It's a very dated interior space. The ATM is, is on the leftmost storefront entrance, so we're consolidating the space, modernizing the branch, bringing the ATM over to the right side, and then that'll allow for, for a, an inline small retail piece on the, on the leftmost portion.
Right. And how long is the lease for, the, the, how long is the lease that the bank has with the building?
So, Cyview, as a, an affiliate of Apple Bank, owns the building?
Right.
Our bran, our branch has, right now, I believe it's a 20-year lease. I would have to, I would have to confirm that. But the branch is, is again renovating the space with the intention on stay, of staying in place.
Right. And when you renovate the basement, is some of that going to be allocated to the, for the new retail space, or is the bank going to take up the entire basement?
The bank is going to retain the entire basement space as it currently does.
Paul, did you have any comments you wanted to make on this?
I think the, not really. The only comment was the door that swings out in the alleyway. I think that was changed to swing in, wasn't it?
Yeah, we're, we're seeking to have that one door swing in and rather than outside. There, there were already double doors that swing out into the sidewalk.
Yeah, because I think there's something with that easement, if I remember correctly, for the alleyway, that it can't have any doors swinging out into the alleyway.
Okay. That's the back entrance to the bank, right? If you're going into the office space, that door on the left?
Well, it would be where the ATM lobby is.
Yeah, way, there is an entrance way back, but that door that you see swinging out at the very front on the top of the...
Oh, yeah, 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 okay.
We added that door because the sidewalk is level with the ATM, so for ADA access, we want to use that door on occasion. There's a step up from the double doors currently.
Right, right, okay.
So, I think what you did, do you have that revision in these plans or no?
We sent a, we sent a revision, I mean, we sent plans through the fire department, but it's not shown here.
Okay, so I think you set the door in so it just doesn't swing through the alley, right?
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, I think, I think that would be about the only comments I would have. You know, it's unique in that they're, they're reducing their footprint, but their original approval is based on the layout they previously had, and they're doing away with the space that will be, you know, leased out at a further moment, which I'd like to explain to them, you know, when that is proposed to be leased, then that'll have to come back to the board for approval, because, you know, it's listed as retail. It really should be just, you know, vacant space, because it's, you're not approving it for retail at this point. You're not approving that space for use.
We'll have to see what comes before us.
Yeah, yeah, till that time. All right?
And so, from what I understand, the signage is not going to change?
Correct. Signage remains the same. The, the canopy that's on the new retail or vacant space will be blanked out to not have any signage until such time that something gets approved for that space.
Okay. Yeah, but just because if the signage doesn't change, the, the front of the building and the signage is, you know, proportional to the, the front of the building, so signage will change, I would imagine, to a certain degree.
Not in this go-around, but at some point, that retail store will apply for whatever signage.
Right. And that would come before our design review committee. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Seeing the plans in front of us, and I'm sure everyone's looked at them intently and has an under, full understanding of what they're trying to accomplish here, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? I have opened the meeting from the public. Just come up to the microphone, identify yourself and...
I'm Mary Ann Pope, and I'm the owner of Levin Garden Avenue, which is directly facing the building where the Apple, where these renovations are being made.
Right.
And I, I have a few questions and perhaps clarifications, more clarifications of what's being done and things that might affect me or my neighbors or the Tower Apartments as this deal moves forward. The, I attempted to look at the plans last week, but they were not up, so my first view of them was this morning. So, I apologize. My questions sort of skip around, and for that, I apologize. But what I did was, when I looked through the pages of the plans, I made the things that I had questions about that were on that page. That's the way I've, I only have four or five questions for the board. And the first one was on page 18. And again, I apologize for skipping around. It's one where number four talks about the demolition is not limited to what is shown on the drawings. The intent of the drawings is to indicate the general scope of the work required. There was a whole list of things on page 18. No, it was, page 18, it was number four. It was a whole list of things that maybe I, at least that's what it came up with.
Is there any...
You're 19. I see 19 there.
Is there anything in particular?
Well, my, my, my question was, it's my understanding that demolition plans are usually as specific as building plans, and my question is it, my question is, is it safe to say that all of the demolition and renovations will be at Pondfield Road and that there will be no renovations at the parking lot level? In other words, where the parking lot is, I know you referred to Level One and the basement tonight. I've heard about that. So, are, is there, will there be demolition of anything on the parking lot level or any renovation of anything at the parking lot level? That's my first question. Next, page 16 refers to page Phase Three notes, and under Phase Three notes, it indicates complete carpet overnight at platform. I don't know what platform is, but, and number two, complete platform and conference room when furniture arise on same weekend.
There's a laser pointer.
Oh, I, I wouldn't be able to see it that far. I'm sorry. That's why I sat over there. My que, my que, even with the glasses. My question is that it's my understanding that the hours of work are from, on a permit, are from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and that there's not work permitted on Saturday at night or on weekends, and that seems to be listed here. Am I correct to assume that deliveries of materials, et cetera, should be delivered during those times? What I'm thinking is that my house is at Levin Garden, and where will all these new materials be dropped off? When will the trucks be coming to drop them off? You know, where will this be done? Will it be done on Pondfield Road or from Garden Avenue? Permit work can, again, not be completed on weekends, so I'm assuming that's the case with this, with this project. Is that correct?
We'll address, just, you give us all your questions and then we'll address.
Next, next item, page 39, lights. My question here, it's very brief, is will there be new lighting along the corridor to the steps leading to the parking lot? I was not able to tell from the lighting plan if there would be new lights that would be along the corridor on either side changed from what it is now. Next, going backwards here, page 12, number 26, each contractor shall at all times keep the premises free from dust and dirt and shall remove accumulation of waste materials or rubbish daily. My question, will the demolition materials be removed daily in the trucks of the individual contractors, or will there be dumpsters? If so, where will the dumpsters be located? When will they be removed? And how long will this project take approximately, since that's what I and everyone who has a house on Garden Avenue will be looking at for some, for some time? Another question, where will the contractors and tradesmen park their cars and trucks? I'm assuming this is all going to happen in the lot at Garden Avenue. It seems to me that homeowners on Garden Avenue and those in the Tower Apartments will bear the brunt, the inconvenience, the noise of most of the construction activity. It is really imperative that the hours of work will strictly be enforced. This is no small project, which brings me to my last question. The cost of the project listed on page two as $250,000. If I were a board member, I would question, require clarification and some documentation of how the, how a project of this size can only cost $250,000. I'm sure that most of the homeowners who have made renovations on their homes that are not to this extent have filed permits in excess of the $250,000. There's a lot of work being done here. I appreciate your time, and basically, most of my comments pertain to what we will see and the use of the Garden Avenue parking lot and what the homeowners there will endure as this project moves on. Thank you.
Well, thank you for standing up and, and making those comments. I think that's important, that the members and residents in the village are aware of what's going on around them and are vocal in, in their approval or disapprovals. Paul, I'm going to ask you to talk about the rules and regulations about work, work orders, hours of work, hours of deliveries, address the issue on the lighting on the steps, contractor refuse, all of these things are in the code, so...
Yes, yes. So, the hours of work, generally, they have to adhere to eight to six, Monday through Friday, weekends and holidays, no works allowed. That is generally strictly enforced. I have told residents in the past that if, if there is work going on on the off times, that there, they can, the remedy is to call the police and they will address it, and then the police would inform me, you know, on the following day.
And what are the fines for that?
It would, I'm not really sure I know how to answer that. Certainly, I think the remedy here would be if it was, if it was just a one-off situation where someone honestly didn't know, generally, we would move on. If it seems to be something that, you know, people just don't care about or repeat offenders, then, you know, we could, the remedy there would be to put a stock work order on the project and, and bring them back before the board to address that.
And can we post signage that says the terms of, and are they going to file a work, a working order? A work order for the project, the construction?
Yes, so the, the building permit, uh, placard does state on there the hours of work. Wouldn't be a bad idea if we, we considered having the contractor post something a little bigger so that, you know, their subcontractors are a little more aware of that. I think that would be a good idea. And, and I'm not sure, as far as a work order, what are, what are you talking about there?
Well, just a construction project, a plan of constr...
Plan?
Yeah.
I think it would be good if the board wanted to give some direction on that, if it could be agreed upon, you know, before a vote that, you know, I, I'm not aware of that property having much, much land of which to put dumpsters, so if they were going to be put on, on right-of-way or, you know, village property, they would have to get approval from Jim Palmer, the village administrator. Most likely, I think the remedy there would be to have a truck which they would, you know, load up and just remove. One of the other things that has happened with the hours of work is if, if logistically it makes more sense and it's, it's safer for them to maybe do things on an off hour, Jim Palmer, myself, and the police chief would meet with them, and, and that would be on approval basis.
And would the residents have any hand in...
Yeah, Jim is very good about letting the neighbors know that, listen, you know, at this certain date, we're going to allow them to come in to, you know, get a section of work done and on a very limited basis. I know we've done that at 100 Pondfields once or twice. You know, we have to work around the schoolchildren and the busy hours, but it's on a very limited basis, and we could put in there in the agreement that, you know, that the neighbors are notified.
And how about deliveries?
Um, most deliveries would have to be during the work hours. Typically, a dumpster pickup might be from 6:00 AM on, but, but we're going to suppose there are no dumpsters here at this point, so...
Well, and there's also no commercial loading dock right there. It's across the street.
Right, yeah.
So, there's nothing there, and there's nothing in the Garden Avenue lot?
Right, right. So, so really, there would be, you know, very limited approval for off-hour work and, you know, like we say, I don't see any dumpster really being there for the most part.
And I assume that the contractors and workers in the space would pay their meters and park in the lot?
Yes, yeah. I know Jim has instructed them to park over on Craft Avenue, you know, something to that effect.
And merchant parking over on Craft?
Yeah, yeah. You know, so it would, it's probably most helpful if the board adds that to the, you know, the approval, if you feel that, that's a good remedy to, you know, give us a little more direction to, you know, check for compliance.
Okay, thank you.
All right, yep.
Now, from the applicant, would you like to speak about the demolition at the parking level or the ground floor and how that might impact?
Yeah, a couple of things. The demo note about items not seen on the plan or to be included is really just about concealed items. It's a note that we typically put on so that a contractor doesn't try to take advantage in pricing and that sort of thing. So, it's not that we're sneaking some kind of demolition that's not shown on the plan. So, if something is hidden behind the ceiling or something, we try to cover that with that As far as the, there's no construction in the parking lot area. The bank, only the bank's exit comes out at that level, so all the construction is interior except for the storefront when that gets done at a certain point in time.
Are there any offices down on the ground floor level?
I believe there is one portion of a medical office there, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
And that's not going to be impacted?
It's not impacted on, on this renovation, yeah.
And, and our, our resident was hesitant about your spending of $250,000, perhaps your...
I have to say that I thought that that was the cost related to the subdivision, not the entire renovation. So, you know, putting up the wall, being able to subdivide and cut the stair and do that kind of thing. So, it's probably, you know, it's probably much more than that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, you know, we'll work out with Paul with that cost.
And that, yeah, and that's, it will be in the permit?
Yeah.
Permit work order, right?
Yeah, fees will be based upon that.
Thank you.
Right.
Okay.
Can I have that 12 o'clock on the clock?
Yeah.
And, and there is no new lighting in the alley, in the walkway?
There's no new lighting. Probably needs it, but...
Probably does.
It's not your responsibility, is it?
Right now, we're not planning any new lighting.
Yeah. Well, lighting is an issue all out throughout the village, so that's an ongoing debate. And that alleyway is, you know, light pollution is a, is just a little thing I have that I'm trying to minimize it if we can. Thank you. I hope that answers your questions to a certain extent.
Can I have one question?
Sure.
How long do you think this is going to take for the...
We think about 20 weeks, so about five months.
Three to five weeks?
The total project, about five months.
Months.
Months?
Because it's fa, it's, you know, the bank has, by law, the bank has to remain open, so we're surgically working around parts of it.
Right.
So, it takes much longer when that happens, you know? If this were just a clean slate, probably take us, you know, 12 weeks or something like that.
Can I ask a...
Sure, go right ahead.
And what, we talked a lot about the, the Garden Avenue side. What impact is it going to have on the Pondfield side, because that's the main intersection of the business district?
Well, I mean, obviously, there's going to be some contractor parking that has to happen, potentially.
On Pondfield?
Potentially on Pondfield, but, you know, that's up to the town. We could park only in the parking lot if that's a request.
Is, is there going to be any scaffolding?
No, no, no.
And, and, I mean, are, are any parts of the, is it envisioned that any parts of the sidewalk are going to need to be closed?
There may be brief closures when we replace the storefront, you know, to take out the glass, put in, put in the new storefront. And actually, the sequencing of that remains, that would be worked out by the contractor and the town right now, so we don't know exactly how they're going to sequence that, but it could be done a bay at a time, which is what we're anticipating.
And, and on the retail, the new space that would be sublet, what types of tenants would, are being pursued for that configuration?
None have, the, the bank hasn't, hasn't solicited anybody here. I'm assuming it's a sneaker shop, you know, I don't know. I don't know, but it certainly will be a permitted use in the end.
Then it'd come before us anyway, whatever.
Yeah, I mean, but we're creating a vacant storefront, basically. If, if this were to move forward, we're basically approving the creation of a vacant storefront, like right in the middle. like right in the middle of Pond Field Road at where it meets Park Place.
That's true.
So.
That's true.
I mean, it would be, it would be in the bank's interest to get it rented as soon as possible. So it's not like it'll be a vacant store for long, if that's your concern, I'm saying.
Thank you. Any other questions from board members? Uh, comments from the public anymore, or were you happy with some of the responses? Unfortunately, new construction, um, and, and change is a fact of life, so. And, um, you know, this, we have this all the time. We could sit still and let things be as they are and never change and would get pretty run down after a while. So I think the plans that they've, um, come to us with, they clearly make economic sense for the bank, um, and the changing modes of, of retail and point-of-service, um, retail in the village. So, um, I'll, I'll leave it at that. Any other comments from the board? So, okay, that brings us back to, uh, the project. Could you step up to the mic then?
I understand progress. I understand these things have to be done. Most of my questions had to do with execution, not whether this, I, I didn't say, well, whether this should be approved or not approved because there will be a vacant store on, as you had mentioned, on the street. So most of the things are the things that would affect the people in the village. For example, parking on Pond Field, if it's there, it's difficult enough to get a parking space on Pond Field without having trucks and contractors park on Pond Field. That's number one.
Well, there's no place for them, so I don't-
Right, so, so, you know, that should be an understood, that you can't park on Pond Field. That should be part of the application. You know, I'm very familiar with this. I do own a commercial taxpayer in Eastchester, so that's how I knew that $250,000 for that whole project that's outlined is, is not a true picture of the total cost of that project. But, I mean, basically, my concern is how it will affect the people in the village, the parking, those people in Tower Place, you know, those on Garden Avenue. And again, contractors coming in, there, when, when you have work done in a, in a commercial space in the heart of town, your contractors are gonna have trucks, they're gonna be dropping off materials, they're gonna be parking for a half an hour here or a half an hour there or an hour here, blocking items. And I just think you have to be very mindful of how this affects the people in the village. I am all in favor for renovating, all in favor of having new and having all of the storefronts occupied. And thank you again for your time.
Thank you. All right, um, for the board, uh, would someone like to make a motion on this applicant's, sorry about that, um, on the application before us? Or are there any thoughts here, reservations?
Paul, you seem to, um, want some action on the part of the board to put conditions on this with respect to parking. Do you need conditions with respect to deliveries or staging of the storefront changes as well?
Uh, can you repeat those questions? Sorry.
I'm, basically, uh, when you spoke earlier, I thought you indicated that it would be useful to have some conditions or directions from the board with respect to contractor parking, um, and perhaps staging of the interruptions, um, on the sidewalk as the storefront was changed. Were there other things that, uh, don't already get covered by the, um, building permit or something?
No, I think the, the items that I discussed previously are, are about, uh, what we would prefer. The, you know, the work on the storefront with the glass, there, there would be a sidewalk permit and we'll coordinate with them to, you know, that's another one where we might say, listen, you know, Saturday morning, go full speed and get it done, that type of thing. So I think that part we can handle. You know, I think that's, that's about it.
Okay.
And the rest of it falls within the village code. The deliveries, hours of work, those are all code items.
Yeah, yeah.
So they, um, that shouldn't really impact this.
Right, right. We can take care of that.
And if it does, we can slap their wrists.
Yeah, I mean, really, you know, and I, you know, I do have at my disposal as, as a zoning enforcement official, if, if I feel that they are, the work that they're doing is not really what the board intended, or it's not according to the code, and it seems to be, uh, you know, a very habitual problem, uh, that I can always, uh, have them come before the board again to address it.
Okay, and predominantly, all of this work is being done inside the building?
Yeah, I mean, you know, generally, we try to seek compliance, uh, that's our first step. And, uh, you know, the neighboring residents are always welcome to voice their, uh, observations with us and, you know, we try, try to, uh, you know, try to make it as seamless as possible. I, I think the good part is most, it is all interior for the most part. And, um, you know, we, we've been through this with other stores on the block, so, um, you know, I think we can handle, for the most part, most of it.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, what say ye, board? Would someone like to make a motion?
So just to be clear, you don't need any specific conditions on the approval?
I thought we were talking about potentially parking and I understand the issues on the Garden Avenue lots since I'm Mary Ann's neighbor, um, next door, so, uh, the issues of what we have in the Garden Avenue lot, it would be, it would be perhaps helpful to have that in the approval.
Yeah, if you were to say, you know, uh, you know, unloading, crack unloading, I think that effect on Pond Field is fine, but contractor parking should be one of the, you know, maybe a one crack. You know, if you want to say it's a native lot, that, you know, that's, that's a little out of my purview, but, uh, both are, is approved by the village administrator.
Well, we can, we can, um, recommend merchant parking for contractors, get short-term, you know, by monthly or whatever. That we can do.
Yeah.
So we could put that into the-
Maybe we could approve this with, um, such conditions on contractor parking-
Correct.
-as the village administrator deems appropriate.
Yeah, yeah, it sounds good.
Yeah.
Can, can we include a time limit? Because when I hear five months, I'm thinking it's not gonna be five months, it's gonna be longer than that. And is there any way to, you know, constrict the period during which the disruption is going to occur?
Well, that's, that's something that wanna come from the landlord, you know? Otherwise, we have, you know, a two-year limit for building permits. You know, if the applicant felt comfortable with, uh, you know, one year, I don't know, you know, that's, that's an agreeable period of time, then, uh, you know, with, with a remedy of coming back with the work to address, you know, why that's done, how much longer it could be.
Well, what about progress reports on the work?
Yeah.
We can, we can ask for progress reports. Because I think what Larry's alluding to and what a lot of people have realized at the Hundred Pond Field project, which has gone on now for years-
Right.
And it's, it's a little bit ridiculous. So, um, anyway, having said that, that's a totally different matter.
Yeah, in some ways, the fact that the bank has to remain open is gonna make the project incremental and somewhat lower impact day to day, even though it'll extend the time.
Correct, yeah. And it is taking place for the most part indoors.
Right, right.
So. All right, so, do I hear a motion that, uh, let's see, how should we phrase this? James, you wanna phrase this?
Sure, that we approved the plans, uh, for 85 Pond Field Road with such restrictions on contractor parking and deliveries as the village administrator deems appropriate. And we would ask for, uh, uh, regular progress reports on construction. I don't know whether it's monthly or at such time periods as the village administrator deems appropriate.
Okay. Do I hear a second to that motion? Jim, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I see none. Thank you very much. Application passes. We're on to the next one. We're looking at, uh, site plan approval for PBD Dock 921 4B Cedar Street. Boccioli Pasta Store, is that what this is?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Maggie, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Very good.
Uh, yes, I'm representing Peter Diana, who's the owner of Il Bacio in Bronxville.
Okay.
And he'd like to open a pasta shop at 4B Cedar Street, which is currently an empty store. It was a fish market a while ago, and then it was gonna be a dry cleaner, and then it, with COVID, the dry cleaner never opened, so it's, it's been sitting empty for a year and a half or so or more. The store is gonna, he's gonna make fresh pasta onsite and have ravioli and different pastas, shapes and everything. And it's, he'll sell it, and then there's also gonna be, so there'll be refrigeration section where you can buy your fresh pasta. And then he'll also have some heated up pasta bowls that you can get and take out. So that, that's the carryout portion, portion of it, basically. So it is a carryout store, which, um, they're right next door to Hunan 3, so I know it's in violation of being too close, less than 100 feet from another, um, carryout store, but it's a completely different kind of thing. And, uh, it's also about 14 and a half feet from Root and Vine down the street, so it is fairly close. But, uh, the, the amount of people that are gonna go in there at one time, it's very small. It probably, you know, four to six people maximum would come at the same time. You know, it's gonna be a lot of people walking and parking across the street in the, the lot right there. You know, it's, it's small, it's a very small store. The down, the basement will be storage, first floor pasta making and, and just a counter for selling. So that's pretty much it, I think.
This is gonna be like a Borgatti's?
Like what?
Borgatti's? You know, he knows, he's smiling over there. Better? Ah, that's, that's not easy to do.
Yeah, there was a pasta store in Bronxville a few years ago, um, Villarinas, remember?
Yeah, Villarina, they didn't, they didn't-
They didn't last for that long, but they just, they just strictly did pasta, they didn't have any kind of takeout, warm, you know, warming up pasta or anything like that.
Right. So, um, you're not serving meals out of this spot?
No, well, no meals, you're just getting a bowl of pasta you bring out, take out with you, but it would be warm. People aren't gonna be eating it there, they'll take it home.
Okay. Okay, um, any questions? Sorry about this.
Can I ask a question, maybe of Paul? Do we know if there, this, not only would this be within 100 feet, it's literally right next door to another carryout establishment? And it's, as you mentioned, about 14 feet from Root and Vine. I know there are, uh, instances where we have more than one carryout establishment within 100 feet of another carryout establishment. We discussed one at the last meeting. But I'm not sure if we have any instances in the village currently where we have two carryout establishments next door to each other.
Would Haagen-Dazs and the coffee place on that corner fit that description?
They're not, it's not next door, yeah.
Got it.
And we have, you know, and like, you know, on the other hand, we have some restaurants that do takeout that are next to carryout establishments.
Yeah.
But they're not, in terms of their, their use, it's not, they're not designated as carryout establishments, they're restaurants, they have seating and, you know, they, they qualify as restaurants. So I just am mindful of the fact that we might be established, we have this restriction, we seem to have waived it on numerous occasions. To me, I would have thought at a minimum, you know, we have to think, oh, what's the purpose of the restriction? It's so that we don't have concentrations of the same business types on stretches of the business district. So, you know, to me, if we're gonna allow adjacent carryout establishments, then really, what's the purpose of the restriction at all? Because it's not even spacing them out less than 100 feet, it's, we kinda don't care. So do, do we have any carryouts next to each other?
No, I don't know very, um, definitely.
Yeah, I did a quick run through the Google Maps today, and I went through downtown and I did not find anything that was, or even a quick one, but I did not find anything that was right next to each other that would carry. And, you know, there's a safety guard, but I didn't do restaurant. There was Il Bacio and it's, um, the bakery, it's where it's, it's where the restaurants, everything I found was a restaurant in the carryout.
I, I guess my, the, this carryout is a very different use than, say, a Hunan or the, the Root and Vine, I mean, they're, they're all, it's gonna be different hours. I think it's, it really isn't gonna, it's, it's a very different theme, I think, so I don't really see it as a-
What are the proposed hours for the shop?
Uh, it's, it's nine to six.
Nine to six.
Monday through Friday, then it'd be like 10 to 6 on Saturdays or something.
Okay.
Will there be any overlap in terms of the menu with the, the bakery that is coming in on Park Place? Cause they're, they said they were gonna do fresh pasta also.
Yeah.
In addition to, they're doing bread and some other things, but they also said they're gonna have homemade pasta also.
I didn't realize they were doing any kind of bread, I mean, not pasta.
It's a different kind of pasta, but, yeah. It's not semolina flour, right? It's not semolina flour. Oh, okay. I mean, if you're gonna make good pasta, you gotta use semolina.
Is that a condition?
No, 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 no. It's just from a baker. Okay, thank you, thank you, Maggie. Paul, we've heard from you on this, I don't, do you have any further to add?
So you may have seen that the memo was updated. I just wanna bring to the board's attention that due to the fact that there are some other carryout, uh, food establishments, that it either would have to be waived by you, that, that section of code, or referred to the Board of Appeals.
Okay, thank you. So Larry, just to address your issue on this, um, with waivers in general, we've issued a lot of them, and I agree with you, the 100-foot restriction has become irrelevant within the village in terms of takeout. But it's also reflects the changing nature of retail and the fact that point-of-service really is the only retail that's kinda surviving out there. At least, this is what I've been led to believe. So, um-
You know, we, we talked about the bank, you know, the bank is gonna have a tenant. Are they gonna, are they gonna put a carryout establishment in there too? And then what, you know, what do we consider?
Well, yeah, that's-
You know, I mean, it's, you know, I, I just don't want the, you know, the business district to turn into a giant food court.
Right. Well, it sort of is already.
Well, but the, if you, if you, you know, if you walk up and down the street, we actually have a lot of different, you know, types of businesses and they're kind of, you know, obviously, there, there's no, um, you know, they come in and out, you know, as the market, you know, demands and, and as opportunities develop. But there, there, you don't have like a stretch of, you know, five carryout establishments next to each other. You know, you, you don't even have two next to each other. You know, you might have, you know, a retail and then a, and a bank, and then a real estate office, and then a pizza place, and, you know, they're all kind of, you know, mixed up. So I'm just mindful of, you know, maintaining that, that variety while at the same time, you know, recognizing that we also don't want empty storefronts.
Well, I, I do understand that, and I think part of the issue here was- And I think part of the issue here was when the Mossbeckers bought that building, they subdivided the entire building into all these little shops. And, and one of the reasons why that store has been empty for so long is because, you know, a small shop has a small amount of, of appeal for different businesses. There's only so many things you can do in that type of situation. But before your time, but, you know, there used to be one, one store, the whole building, from where the restaurant is, where the Greek restaurant is, all the way back to Hunan. That was one store. So, anyway. I hear what you're saying. We have just recently waived the hundred-foot rule, so those who waived it, maybe they want to speak and say something.
Glad to. I, I think it goes back to what you were saying, this is a bit of a shoebox space, you know? And when you try to envision what can come into this space, I think it is much more limited. For instance, it's nice to have full-service restaurants with takeout in between, but this could not possibly, you know, encompass a, a full-service restaurant. Then when you get outside of that, you start thinking about other retail uses. I think the other thing is, this isn't craft, you know, it doesn't have the foot traffic that craft does. And therefore, you know, it, it's only going to support, I think, certain uses and is more limited than some of the other real estate in town. For instance, the real estate that Apple Bank is going to open up, I think is different in terms of its foot traffic as, as compared to this. So given the limited range of uses, I think a number of us have grudgingly said we'd rather have full storefronts, even if we don't have the ideal mix. So, my two cents.
Anyone else?
I guess it's interesting is that the two uses we're comparing, the one we approved last time, this one both involve empty storefronts.
Yeah.
And they were empty for a while.
Yeah, but they were, also, these stores have been empty for reasons that have nothing to do with the retail environment. The, you know, where the bakery went in or the baker went in, that store has been vacant because, for a number of reasons that are not just related to, because a lot of people would have liked to have gone into that spot. So, without getting into further, no, I, I don't see an issue here. Does anyone else? I mean, we've made a waiver in the past, we're going to make another waiver if we approve this, or we can send it to zoning, and they'll send it back to us like the last one did, so it's kind of a waste of time. And I think, you know, I can't really make a motion, but maybe Jim, you could make one?
Why can't you make a motion?
Because...
He's the chairman.
I'm the chairman, I'm technically...
All right, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
We'll prove it.
All right. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Seeing none or reluctant? You can always abstain, you know.
No.
All right, thank you, that's passed. Good luck to you now. And the last item on the agenda for tonight is the docket ten twenty-one at thirty-two Parkway Road. Is there someone from the applicant here who would speak? You can, you can take off your mask if you like, so we can understand you.
Sorry, I'm a teacher, so I'm used to like keeping the mask on in public places.
I got it.
We are the owners of thirty-two Parkway Road. We live in, we currently reside in apartment one.
And your name is?
Alexandra Carpachios.
Okay.
And this is my husband, John.
Good evening.
By the way, thank you for coming down, because there was some, well, whatever, I'll let you speak first.
I'm not really sure what I'm supposed to say. We put in plans and were approved to create a, two bedrooms out of an enclosed porch and bedroom on the side of our home for bedrooms for our two children. Those plans were approved and we went ahead with the work. Yeah. So I'm, I'm not sure what I'm supposed to say here. Do you have questions for me or?
Yeah, I think, I think you have to understand that there was a mistake made in this approval. You understand that?
Yes.
And I was under the impression that this was part of a longer-term project
Yes.
on the house. And if, what I was hoping that you would have brought down would have been some kind of ideas or plans of where you're going with the entire construction.
Of course. So we were, we met last week with the design review committee, the, with the understanding that we are going to, for the moment, put in some landscaping to kind of break up the, oop, sorry, the driveway with the extension, so there's more of a softer look on the outside of the home. We currently do not have plans for our, for the next steps that we are going to take for the outside of the home as we are working in phases due to our financial constraints. So what I can say to the plans are that the extension has what's called a board and bad siding, which we will utilize also, the plan is to utilize also on the garage, which is a three-car garage on the property, as well as on the front porch of the home on the first level. The reason we used this siding is because when our home was built, the siding that was used on our home is no longer being produced, manufactured. It hasn't been manufactured since the fifties. So, yes. So we have found many ways that the horizontal with the vertical siding have been married on white homes such as ours. So that is the plan. After meeting with the design review committee and implementing some short-term resolutions for, you know, just to ease the look a little bit, we did say that within the next few months we would be submitting plans to be reviewed and discussed as far as the rest of the beautification of our home and what we intend on doing. But right now, we don't have those done yet, as they were not part of the plan for right now.
So may I ask a question? You own the entire property?
Yes.
And it's a...
Three-family.
Three-family or two-family house? Three-family house?
Mm-hmm.
And your intention, are you going to maintain it as a three-family house?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Gary, I had a quick question. In general, at the house, and not to step into where design review works, but in general, there, you know, a bunch of, a lot of the construction has these, these sorts of shapes, and this addition is notably squared off.
Yes.
And I was wondering, was that construction in place? Was that a prefabricated unit? I just, I was curious about the sort of construction history. Yeah.
Yes, so the house has been added on, I believe around in the sixties, or there was another bump on the third floor, which the, it was a normal roof and then they made another bump. Then we had the two, the covered porch and the extra room that was made there, that was like...
Right.
That, and then we have the garage, that's like this. And I wanted to clean out the lines, and considering that the, the front of the house has the balcony, so I wanted to do the same thing on the side and put the railing, change the railing at, at the second phase, and implement there what the house had in the past, which was a more traditional railing made of wood. And so, and of course...
Like an homage to...
Homage to what the house was. Diagonally, our neighbor has something similar, and I can present that in the plans.
Are you an architect?
No.
No. So did you use an architect for this project? You did?
For this, yes. We made, I made, I wanted to make a square roof just for that, to clean up the lines. It was too much, too busy for, for my taste, so...
And this was constructed in place?
Yes.
According to those plans? Understood? Okay.
Can I ask a question about the windows?
Yes.
It seems that, I mean, for, for bedroom or for a, a house, the windows seem completely out of scale and very small.
Oh, that's, okay.
On the side, and then the window in front is, is popped out, is what I'm looking at, and it blocks another window against your house.
So we made two bay windows, because there are like nooks and bay windows on the inside for our kids. The windows that are on top, the small windows that are to scale, we can't put windows, full-size windows on that wall, as you know, because it's parking, and because of the fumes with the cars and whatnot, we were not able to put full-size windows there. So we put windows on top just to kind of preserve the wall and...
To gain, to gain the wall.
To gain the wall, excuse me.
From, from the inside of the house.
From the inside of the house and bring in some light.
And those were the, for the architect, that those were the biggest windows you were allowed to put in there?
Yes. This, these...
No, no, no. The, the windows that we put on an angle are egress windows. Those egress windows could not be on the side of the parking because of the fumes. So we had to put there fixed windows that could not open. And my idea to the architect was, can we raise them up, since we don't want to, from inside the house, to look at the wind, to, to look at the cars, from, from the parking lot. So that's why we raised it to that height.
And all of this went before our design review committee to get the approval of, of the, these windows in this, this box?
No, no, no. None of this went before.
I think, I think we'll be pretty interested in hearing kind of what happened. I don't think they would know. I think Larry would know.
Yeah. So, well, thank you. Thank you all. What grade do you teach?
Seven.
Seventh grade?
Yes. U.S. history.
That's a tough grade. Paul, would you like to say something here?
Yes, yes. I, I want to just let the board know that the, the applicant was very good in, in coming to our office to get a builder permit for the work they did. An error from my department and me, we gave them a permit to do the work, but the catch was that it's a three-family, it's not a single-family residential home. And so, a single-family, if this was a single-family, they would not have had to come to this board. The fact that it's a three-family does require it to be brought forth to you, so it was not done, and, and that was my error. So there was a, a neighbor that had filed a complaint, and I looked into it a little further and then realized that it was an error. I contacted the owners and they were very responsive, they've been very responsive the whole way, and, you know, so I, I think they, they had all of good intent, there was no intent to do things, you know, under the radar or anything like that. So I've asked, I, I contacted them and asked them to come before you, and, you know, I, I would want you to just consider that. And looking at this, that, you know, it was done on the up and up, but it was due to my error that, that they, you know, they didn't come before you previously. So I apologize, and, you know, hopefully we can come to some agreement that makes everybody feel like, you know, that, that something's been done to help this situation.
Thank you, Paul. We won't hang you by your thumbs. I'm going to open the meeting to the public. If there's anyone here from the public who would like to speak, do so now or forever hold your tongue. You... Please announce.
My name's Lorraine Izzo. I own thirty-eight, thirty-six, thirty-eight Parkway Road. I've lived there for over twenty years, I think it's about twenty years. And I only came tonight because I received the notice. I assumed it probably had to do, had to do with something structural because it, it involved number thirty-two. But I just want to say that because I've lived in the house for over, you know, around twenty years, that John and his wife have done great things, and they didn't even know I was coming tonight, but they've done great things with the landscaping, with the lighting, they've improved the block a lot. You know, as you know, there's, half of the block is multifamily homes. I have a single-family home.
Right.
And I like that, that they live in the house, that they take very good care of it. I love the driveway, you know, there's grass, it's really nice. My yard is the one that looks a little unruly because it's all native plants. I don't have a lawn, and I get monarch butterflies every year because of the milkweed, and, and I really like when things look natural, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorraine, for your input, and thank you for coming out. I, I have to say, I think it's important that residents speak up to issues. This is usually pretty mundane meetings, but it's nice to see residents who take the time to come out and voice their opinions. So thank you for coming. All right, there's really nothing for us to approve here, is there? It's really, it's accomplished, it's done, right? So Larry's got a question.
I, I guess I should, in respect of the design review, review, the main issue we focused on was the landscaping, which you had alluded to. The applicant, I believe yesterday, provided a landscaping plan, and, and the idea behind the landscaping from DRC's perspective was to reduce some of the visual impact of the different architectural style, so that it wasn't so stark when you're looking at the, the building as a whole. So I, I think most of you should have received the landscaping plan, so, you know, I guess the thing I would add would be if we, to the extent we consider a site plan approval for this, that maybe we should factor in the landscaping plan as part of that approval.
Okay. Well, we don't have a site approval plan before us tonight, do we?
Don't you have a landscaping plan?
Yeah, that's what we considered, yes.
It is? This is what this is, a site approval plan.
Can I just ask a question as a newbie? If, if this had gone, if this error hadn't been made, and because it's a three-story home, this would have gone in front of Larry and in front of the design review, what would have happened if this hadn't happened?
It would have come to us. Actually, we are technically within our bounds, we could tell you to tear the whole thing down. And, and I, I think that would be a little overboard, but I'm just letting you know that it could be done. It would go before design review, it would come to us, they would make a recommendation, they would have changed items in the plan, they would have worked with the architect to come up with something more amenable to the architectural structure of the house and to the neighborhood.
Okay.
And, and Leslie, to your point, like what, what might have happened, like at DRC for example, is when, if they came to us with this, you know, just as an isolated project, we might have said, well, you know, that's really not architecturally consistent with the existing structure, but then they might have said, well, actually, this is part of a multi-staged, you know, we're going to do a, a complete renovation of the home, and this is only phase one, at which point we probably, I mean, I'm, you know, saying what if, what if, but we probably would have said on DRC, bring us the full set of plans, and then we'll look at the project as a whole, and then maybe we'll let you proceed on a kind of phase-by-phase basis. But, you know, that's, you know, which is why we asked them to, you know, produce that more complete set of plans, so we could see, have at least a roadmap of where this is heading.
Thank you.
That is our intention, was meeting with you last week. Also, teacher I don't know your name. Okay. Sorry. After meeting with the DRC last week, it became the number one priority for us, that within the next few months, we would put a full plan together for what we want to do on the exterior of the home, and meet with the DRC and figure out, you know, what it is that we, what, you know, get your input to kind of get that going. So it's, it's not something that we're just going to like throw away, you know, but, yeah.
Is there any way that we could, if we were doing site approval or whatever, we can do it too, like contingent on the landscaping plan?
can do it to like contingent on the landscaping plan, that the landscaping does happen, you know, sooner?
Absolutely.
Rather than later, because that would help soften the impact from the street?
Hi. Yeah. So, in the front of the house right now, I have some evergreens that I'm going to move immediately. I think you're holding a picture of the house immediately in front of the cars.
Right.
And I'm going to plan in the next two or three weeks and close the other section where the condenser for the AC is. So, this is going to happen in the next two or three weeks. I'm going to do it. I'm not going to wait.
This is planting season, you know.
I would have started earlier if I didn't have the stop-work order, but...
It's got to get a little cooler.
I mean, actually, ironically, I don't think you can do it until we approve it, because it's subject to a stop-work order.
I thought you, yes, yes.
So, the sooner, I think the sooner we, if we decide to approve it, the sooner we approve it, the sooner you can do it.
All right. So, rather than debate this all night, would someone like to make a motion?
I just want to say one thing before the motion.
Go right ahead.
I can see where we're all going, but I think, you know, there are several of us here who are fairly frustrated that, you know, this is a fait accompli, because I do think that if this had gone through the proper sequence, design review would have had things to say, just visually looking at, you know, the choices that have been made.
We can still hang him by his thump.
I understand that we are where we are, and it's not your fault, but it's frustrating. So, anyway.
It is frustrating. And I think that's been addressed. I think Paul has been reprimanded to a certain degree, and hopefully, this, we won't have this come up again. And you'll, you'll give us some good plans, Alexandra, you know. Treat us like seventh graders.
Yeah.
Okay?
I don't know if you want to be my class.
So, again, would I, could I hear a motion?
I move we approve the site plan with the planting plan.
With the plantings? And second?
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, Jim, seconds. I'm sorry, Ashley.
I know. I don't, I don't think we're allowed to.
No, you're technically, you're technically not.
That's why I was...
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? See none? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And thank you all for coming this evening. Our next meeting will be November 10.
Sorry, Gary, do we need to do Compass?
What?
The Compass awning?
It was listed on the agenda.
Compass? I didn't see that. No. No, no. Didn't you pull that from the agenda?
Christina updated the agenda this afternoon.
Oh. Aye, 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 aye. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
It should be a quick one.
Okay. So, Compass, what is this for DRC reference?
Okay, so this is, we looked at this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, Compass is a real estate office. They are proposing to move into, I think it's the Maison Rouge?
Yes.
Space. And they came to us to have us review their, their awning for their business. It was very simple. I think it's black with white letters, capital letters. It's their logo. We had no comments and no objections, and we recommend approval.
Okay. I don't see anybody from the public here who wants to comment in, so we'll open it and close it and vote on it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? See none? Good night.